All right, we're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Powers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft.
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Pressler.
Here.
Mr. York.
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Pastor. Appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we vow this evening to acknowledge your goodness. Lord, I do know that Father, it's ready, maybe we have itself ready Halloween enough yet, but I'm thinking about Thanksgiving and gratefulness. Your blessings have been multiplied to us, and we're just flat out grateful to you, Lord. We pray your intended blessings here upon this school district, this board, we pray, Lord, that they would seek your guidance and that they would seek what's best for the students, and what's best for the students is indeed what's best in heaven's plans. So we thank you for that and ask that guidance. We pray, Lord, that you'll bless, especially, Lord, bless teachers as they begin to incorporate gratefulness into their lesson plans and that God help us be a grateful people. Now, we pray you're blessed upon this particular meeting. May the deliberations that are deliberated tonight be those of honor, be those, Lord, that are pleasing in your sight. We thank you again and pray it all in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna look for an approval of the agenda. Pastor Zenon?
Phil, move.
Say it. Mr. Pressler, Mr. York, Mrs. Powers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Why should you guys call zero?
Next, we have presentations. Mr. Busenek.
Yes, it's that time of year where report card results are in. Of course, you want to see what those results look like in comparison to where we've been as a district, in comparison to where we are today, as well as where we wanna go in the future. So, Scott, thank you for joining us this evening, and I know that we've been having a lot of discussions
Yeah, a little bit.
about this piece, so we're excited.
It'd probably be easier to come down to the chairs if you don't mind. Need to make a move. You got it, the lights. I've already been able to accomplish at least two of my goals. One was to stand up, the other one was to speak up. Those are the two easy parts. The other one's no one to shut up, so that's always the hardest part of public speaking. So I'll do my best to be brief. I'll try to take ten or fifteen minutes. And before I get into the meat of it, I've been thinking about a couple things here lately as I've I kinda started this little slideshow a couple weeks ago, created it on Google Slides, and just as we've had conversations about different stuff, you know, that would be good to put in, or maybe we can put that in there, or what would be important, what would not be important. And I keep going back to these couple things that are I don't even know what to make of the thoughts, but I keep going back to me as, you know, whatever grade I was in, when I took this thing called the Otis Lennon, back in like probably nineteen eighty-one or something. I don't know if anybody in here can remember the Otis Lennon test. Mr. York might be one of them, or Miss Beckett. And I'm thinking, man, so that was the beginning of all of this standardized testing that has come to be so much of our world that sometimes seem like we flounder in, we drown in, we sometimes we overvalue it, sometimes we undervalue it. We try to find out where we are, and there's so much depth and complexity to all that. You start comparing yourself to others. I heard here a couple of years ago that comparison can be the theft of contentment. I never forgot that, so I try to always zero back into what it is that we wanna be as Edgewood. And I also actually thought of Mr. York said this about four years ago. He probably doesn't even know how much it affected me, but I got done doing one of these things here for you all, sitting probably near the same seat you are now, and I got done with about fifteen minutes, and he said, well, I'm paraphrasing. It was something to the fact that really the main thing that matters about this whole thing is whether or not a kid gets a diploma and graduates. Man, like what about that number? And in a way, I was like laughing sarcastically to myself, like, okay, I'm just gonna go sit down because nothing I just said mattered, because I didn't have that number up there on the screen. But as I thought about it, is it, even as I'm making this, and I've thought about that a lot of times. Every year, we get them back, and I go back to what really matters. What really matters is the fact that a kid can walk across the stage, get a diploma from Edgewood. They can take it, they can go enlist, employ, enroll, whatever it is that they wanna do with that diploma, based upon the experiences that they've had here from our staff, administration, our teachers, everybody involved in the process, which is really what matters. They probably can't remember what they got on their third grade test. They can't remember the fourth grade test. They can't remember what they got on any of that stuff. And the teacher's been harping on it their whole life, but what they really wanted was that golden ticket to get across the stage with that diploma so that they can go try to make their dreams come alive. So I don't have anything on this about graduation rates, once again, but I did wanna mention it because I value I've just thought about that a million times. I just wanted to bring it up and let those kinda be at, you know, the back of your mind as I explain this. This is very deep. I could've picked out a thousand things to talk about, and we could've talked about them for a long, long time. But what I'll do is I'll just tell you that there's a newer report card. It started really last year. It's been in the works for a couple of years. This is the first year that they've ever given an overall rating according to stars. Now, they used to get excellent, excellent distinction, and every other thing you could think of for all these tests we've had over the years. But we've entered into what they have like a star ranking system now that came into effect really last year. It's been in the works for a few years, and we get overall rankings as a district, and then we get rankings as buildings and on all those little components. Achievement, you can see, that's the actual test they take. Progress, that measures basically one year of growth or how much growth a student had. You might've heard that called value added, or how much value you added to that student for that particular year. Early literacy component, you probably know that better as third grade reading guaranteed. You don't move on to fourth grade without it, or you're not supposed to. I don't know if I should, I'll just leave it alone there. Graduation component, they track your four-year cohort and your five-year cohort. Sixty percent of that component is on the four-year graduation rate. Forty percent of that component is on the five-year graduation rate. And then gap closing has to deal with like your subgroups, students on IEPs, economically disadvantaged, your different groups of ethnicity and so forth. If there's fifteen people in a grave in that particular component there, and they've also thrown a lot of other stuff in it. Chronic absenteeism is thrown in there, much to our surprise. I know Mr. Banks was really surprised that it got thrown in that, and all the marbles went into that one component that tracked attendance. And there's really about ten components in it. So if you don't have the ten components and you got one, and you're only aren't graded on that, henceforth, you need to get kids come to school, and that's harder to do than it sounds like. This right here, I don't know how else to articulate it, but there's a lot of work to be done. I'm not surprised they're not counting that. That used to be called Prepare for Success, and now you can see they've given it quite a lofty title there. College, Career, Workforce, and Military Readiness Component. Man, how do you measure that? Good luck, right? That's why it's report only right now. It's really hard. So there's the weights for all those. That's pretty important to know that over fifty percent, what is that, fifty-six, fifty-seven point something percent is your achievement and progress. Remember, achievement is the test that they take and how many kids pass it, and progress is whether or not you grew the kids one year. I don't always agree with how they measure the stuff, but the bottom line is that is where the meat of your grade on this report card comes from. Having said that, you can see what I said a few minutes ago. Somebody else decided that fourteen percent of it's gonna go to that. So sometimes I say "they," and I feel like I'm talking to myself 'cause I'm like, I think I'm "they" sometimes, right? And I kinda trying to still figure that out. So there's your weighted attribution for the report card. So when you see all that, you see that not all things are created equal, and there's a lot of stuff hidden in all of these. There's where you're, I know some of our attendance has really been a topic of conversation. It shows up in here. It shows up as five points of seventy-five in that component right there. Five points out of seventy-five. Now, you don't have every component because your building doesn't have all the diverse groups and subgroups that they need to have there. So I'll move to the next slide. There's, this is a little confusing over on the left side, so I wouldn't pay as much attention to all that. I go down the middle there. Stars are easy to understand, they're one through five. The right-hand column is also pretty easy to understand. It tells you what they all mean. I find it kinda funny that the two green are in, they say different things, and the two blues, they all kinda say different stuff, and they're in the same colors but different stars, so I don't know what that's all about, but this is our new scale, so that's the overall rating. So you're probably wanting to know what we got. We got a three-star. So if I'm being truthful, there's a couple definitions of meeting the standards that Ms. Fivie and I and a couple of folks in the district that really, I'm gonna reluctantly use the word, enjoy the report card or looking at the report card. We felt like personally we underachieved on this, but according to somebody else's definition, again, whoever they are, they said, hey, you met the state standard. You guys are fine. So if report card police come around, they're not looking for Edgewood because, again, they're saying you met the standard according to all the definitions of what it takes to get this. You can see we got a met the state standard, met the state standard, met the state standard, and then progress, we did not progress is because we did not show one year of growth for every student in the district consistently enough in all of the tested areas. There's a lot to this. This is like a three-day PD, so I'm flying through all this stuff. So as a district, we met the standard. Man, I could nitpick seven parts of it right now that if we barely tipped the scale, that'd be a three-point-five, and if we barely tipped the scale the other way, it'd be a two-point-five. So I told Ms. Fivie, let's just be thankful it's a three right now. We feel like maybe we underachieved a little bit, and let's push that up to a three, five, or a four.
So Scott, let's
Yes.
ask a question.
Yeah.
So if we got a five on graduation rate, would that be one-hundred percent?
Would that, that would be, oh, would that go up to a five? No.
If we had a hundred percent graduation rate, would we have gotten a five on that?
No, because it's only worth fifteen percent or a little more.
Well, I mean on that.
If we would've got a hundred percent graduation rate
We would've gotten five stars.
We'd probably be, it depends, because remember, four-year graduation, sixty percent, five-year graduation's forty. We'd probably be at least a four and a half, probably a five. But there is a feasible way that you could get a hundred percent and your five-year cohort got left a few off, and you could you're probably correct. It'd probably be a five, but there's an outside chance it may.
I was just wondering if it was one of those measurements that you can't possibly achieve, because they've done that to us before, right?
One-hundred percent. I've always questioned one-hundred percent graduation rate anyway, the way they count it.
So Patty and, and not Patty, sorry, Paige and Melissa, I did the dating for that's not class of twenty-twenty, what, three last year, it's twenty-twenty-two. And so our frustration is this last class that graduated, we are one kid shy of getting four cards.
Right. So when I talk about small bits of data and every little thing matters, and if that goes up, you saw that that's fourteen percent of your report card grade. We go back and do the math, we could very well have a three-point-five overall. So like, you know, there are people that are bragging about, I hate to say bragging, but there are people with very low graduation rates. I'm talking in the low eighties, low eighties graduation rate that have a higher overall report card grade than us. So I don't know what to make of that either, but I'll just toss that out there. There's a lot to this, so again, we gotta get them to the stage, get them a diploma, nurture them, love them, provide an environment where they feel safe so they can leave here and enroll, enlist, or employ, and come back and say, thank you for providing for me what you did, and the teachers being who they were, and the administration and employees. So great question. Let's move through all the things real quick, because I did wanna show you a couple other things. There's our ratings for EHS. Again, that component right there. It's just that we didn't show enough growth in one year on the test. That was probably our weakest area of the report card, is the actual achievement on the test. Let's zip through these. If you do want me to stop, let me know. There's EMS. Their grade is lowered because the bottom line is they're what you would call end of course or their Ohio State test. They're just not high enough right now, and we're doing a lot of work to try to get those up. I'm gonna go over some of our goals for how we're trying to do that here in a minute. And you can see that they are only counted on three parts. So when you do the math, it's, so that's gonna be there, you can look it up on the report card. So they divide them in thirds. That gap closing is probably whatever, thirty-five percent, and those two are the remaining. They divide it out versus that first chart that I gave you, about twenty-six percent, twenty-six percent, and all that. Because those have to equal one-hundred percent. So then they do the basic math and divide it out. So a lot of weight is on that achievement. There's EIS overall. Pulled out a four-star over here. That is because of our gifted processes that we do, gifted testing and screening and providing them services. I'll talk about that in a second. This right here is it depends on if kids are on reading improvement plans and on or off-track and all the diagnostics that you run. It's very
Complex.
Complex, yes. It's just a two. Do I believe it's a two? I probably don't. Does someone else who said that her building's a three-point-five and higher than our overall? Yes, yes, I do. So she's showing up as a three there, or EIS, they are showing up there. And then, you know, unfortunately, and there's little bitty tipping numbers that we look at all the time that could flip that. I think Lori said somewhere the other day, one of these that she was looking at, would it, yeah, would it turn progress into a four, correct? And it was the chronic absenteeism, and it was just a few stu-, wasn't the absenteeism?
Two-point-four percent.
Yeah, two-point-four percent difference in chronic absenteeism would've turned that to a four, probably put that at a four. Then again, you know, that's weighted into your stuff. So this is, I'm trying to paint a picture for you here of how deep this report card is. We knew this was coming. That was a one last year. It showed up as a four this year. We know exactly how we got the four because we identified some gifted students and we were servicing them. And if I'm being totally transparent, we were not aware that we had to report that to make it count on this year's report card in the timely fashion that they said they were. So we said, hey, that's low-hanging fruit. We won't let that happen again. We didn't. That was a one last year. It's a four this year. That was very calculated. This right here, we just gotta get more kids on track, according to our devil's data. I'll move on there again, taking a little delay. I'll just tell you that's from chronic absenteeism. I'm not gonna spend time on it, because I got a whole slide on chronic absenteeism. But what I do wanna do is go over some of the and that's, that's Mr. Banks and his building over there. They got one shot at moving that. It's chronic absenteeism. They don't have any other opportunities. You got some on-off track you can do, but they're just coming in in kindergarten to find out where they're at. So they don't go year to year. They got one shot, and that's to get kids come to school. And that could be the hardest thing of all this. So here's some of our highlights.
That's an adult issue.
Yes, yes, yes.
A kindergarten kid doesn't wake up in the morning saying, hell, we're
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so.
So four-star and gap closing at the primary school, I just told you that. That was because we identified whole-grade screening. We identified more kids as gifted through our subject-specific and cognitive gifted testing, and we also serviced them. There's some really good highlights with our gifted students right now as far as these are all calculated stuff that we had a really good hunch that it was gonna happen. Megan Rook has really worked hard, along with me and some of our staff, to make all this happen. We also have a four-star gap closing rating. And remember, gap closing is just in your gifted students. Did they meet the goal or close the achievement gap from the previous year? Just in the gifted cohort. So those are exceeding. Remember the definition of a four-star. Our gifted students are exceeding what the state says we're supposed to do. Edgewood Intermediate School met the gifted indicator. To me, that's one of the hardest indicators ever to meet on the report card because you gotta get this thing called performance index. You gotta identify a lot of students, and you gotta service them all. So there's a lot there. It's really hard. If you miss one, you don't meet it. If you get all three, you meet it. So there's no in-between. It's like pass or fail. That's a really hard one to meet. We've met it before, maybe three or four other times in my time here from other schools. That's a hard one, and it's really a hard one to duplicate. So you got your work cut out for you next year as well. This right here, I was really pleased with. We serviced ninety-six percent of our gifted students. I'd say the four percent that we didn't, a lot of the parents refuse it. They don't want it, and just say they'd rather not have the service for whatever reason. It's personal choice. Right here, Edgewood provides educational services. The sixty-seven, I know you're gonna find this amazing, that you think it should be closer to a hundred. We have the highest we provide services to the most students or the highest percentage of students in all of Butler County. To me, that's something to celebrate, and it also means that we're gonna try to make sure that every kid gets what it is that they're supposed to be getting. And that is very hard to do because it requires some creative scheduling, some creative class placement with kids to make sure that you are getting them with teachers who have been trained and are highly qualified in gifted instruction. And if you start teaching gifted, by the way, you gotta get sixty contact hours over four years. So you gotta go get these CEUs or contact hours. So every time we ask somebody, like if I ask Ms. Adams, hey, you wanna do gifted? That also comes along with sixty hours of additional training. And you get the slant eye sometimes when you mention that to teachers because it's so hard. I wish I had time to talk to you about gifted ID and service points. I really don't, but that just means we identified the maximum number of kids and we serviced them when we identified them. You have to screen, but you don't have to service. You're supposed to service, but there's a lot of ways to say, we can't service. We're doing our best to do both. So, yeah, the most in Butler County. I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And there are a lot of high-achieving districts in Butler County. So here's one thing I wanna talk to you about, if I can just get like six or seven more minutes. That performance index was part of the achievement, the very first top-left portion of the report card when I showed you all the parts of the report card, the components. It's the achievement. It's the test they take. They got this convoluted, long way to decide how you get your performance index points. It's the percentage of students who scored in a certain number. So twenty-six percent of your kids got a one, forty-two percent got a two, twelve percent got a three, and so forth. And they put this in a formula and do the ranking for you. We are not a four-star. We are a three. We're a decent way off from a four-star. Here's some of the ones that we've been in the past. I'm trying to get this little clicker to keep up with me. It's delayed. We gotta get eighty-seven points, and I'm gonna show you how we're gonna do that. We went from seventy-seven to seventy-nine to seventy-nine. Virtually, Ms. Fivie and I were talking the other day, it's flat, right? Yeah, we could say it grew three years in a row, and that will be a fact. But the bottom line is, with all the testing we do, thousands of proctored tests, we probably proctor, what, ten thousand tests a year, probably? Fairly flat, considering those numbers. But still a three-star, according to the state's definition. We feel like we can do better. So I wanna show you this here, and I've said this a gazillion times, I think, since I've been at Edgewood. Advanced, these are kids, the advanced plus are kids that get grade acceleration, subject acceleration, and then they score a four or a five, will get bonus points. That's really hard to do because subject acceleration and grade acceleration is different than gifted education. That's hard to get that many kids. So advanced is a five, accomplished is a four, proficient's a three, basics a two, limited is a one. If you know anything, and you can see the different point attributions given to that, and then they total it up over here. So you can see, we had twenty-three percent of our kids at Edgewood got a one. If you know anything about how to come with that number on the bottom right, as soon as you see that, you can close the book on it. You're not getting eighty-seven points. You're not getting a four-star. That's over. You don't have enough math to overcome. See, because it's only worth point three? If you get a three on it, you're basically like your value's a whole number or a whole student. And then you can see, you would think that a five right there would be like of equal value to the, it's point six below one, basically. But you can see, you've basically gotta get like six fives for every kid that gets a one to put you back at zero. Does that make sense to you? So when you get twenty-three percent of your district getting a one, it is over. You can't even really get nineteen percent. It's over. So we have to push these numbers up and get them away from getting the ones. Because, yeah.
This slide is very telling in that the weight for advanced plus, advanced, and accomplished, and proficient is higher as it shows us here. But you don't, you don't get so much for the kids that are in this limited
Right.
and basic, and they're the kids who need, are the most important in my mind. Those, I mean, we can play the game, and we can go after advancing in those top three categories and get more points. But what have we done? I mean, will those kids that are in that limited category, would they move up in that case? Or would it still be, you know what I'm saying?
They'd give you more value.
With some of these, these scorings.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because once you get up to advanced plus, it's like nowhere to go.
Yeah.
So it's unaspire if you're not in the performance index.
And chances are, the kids that are in advanced and advanced plus, they're gonna do that without Edgewood, without Lethada, without Talawanda, without Ross, without Monroe. They're gonna get there anyway, right? I mean, those kids are gonna get there. So our toughest job, and the kids who really need what we do, are those ones that are in those lower categories.
And you can see, yeah, they're really making you, this system here really pins you to the floor for getting those scores. It's, I, in my estimation, that should be a, that should be a point eight, and that should be, or a point nine, really, and that should be a point eight if you wanna make them of equal negative or positive value there. They make you suffer more for a one than they reward you for the five. Can you see that on there? It's not, it's not an equitable, and I know that's a popular word right now. That is not equitable. So I toyed with it a little bit, and I moved that up two percent, that up two percent, that up two percent, or what was it on the last one?
Did we move every category up?
Yeah, I moved them up two percent to see what it would do, but then I knew I was robbing the bottom, so I had to take from the bottom to see what we would get. This was at like twenty-three. Remember on the other screen, twenty-three percent of our kids got a one? I think that was that. So I took the four from there and two from there. So I went two, 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 took away, so I had to rob this. And it still only puts us at and that's, that right there is hard to do. If we could do that next year, I would be ecstatic. I know it sounds easy. That would put us at eighty-four points. Remember on that one slide, I said you need eighty-seven. That puts us at seventy-eight point two-nine. We're still a three-star. So it's a lot of pushing. It might be a three-point-five, but at the end of the day, we gotta get that number to an eighty-seven to get us to a four-star in achievement. Now, I think we underachieved. Would you agree? I think we've underachieved, and there's room to grow. We just don't know where that ceiling is, and then the extra things we gotta do to push through the ceiling. But it will grow.
I'm gonna go back to, first of all, we had COVID for two years. People weren't watching this. People wanted to keep kids healthy, right? So last year was really the first year back. All this was back on the plate. I'm not trying to water it down. My point is, I think we can do a lot better with focus, a lot better with curriculum adoption, targeted professional development. Do not let that drop and just keep the focus. I mean, I, I've always said, it really doesn't matter what the focus is, as long as everybody knows you're watching. We're gonna see progress, no doubt.
That's why I said we could pick anything on this report.
But what bothers me, when I close my eyes and think of Edgewood in comparison to Butler County schools. Yeah, you might say we're three star, which is state average. But if you compare us to the county, we're bottom three. And I don't look at us as bottom three, which tells me we have a lot of work to do. We can do better. And I think we can do that when we put money into textbooks adoption. We um, offer the right professional development and keep a focus on what is really showing improvement. Nobody wants to look at student, a parent and say, your child didn't grow this year under my instruction. Nobody wants that. We don't get up and try to do that. But we need to make sure our teachers have the right tools and understand what strategies lead to that improvement.
I'm just gonna pull this up there and let you read through it for the sake of time. I'm gonna. I could talk all day about that first bullet, but I'm not gonna. So there those are.
They probably don't know what that is, Scott.
Well, okay. That stands for multi-tiered system of support. PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. It's, it's basically trying to create the environment that promotes when you do well, you're rewarded to enhance the environment of being safe and nurturing and all the stuff that you wanna drop your kids off at school to do. RTI is Response to Intervention. Um, when students are struggling, whether it be behaviorally or academically, you're supposed to give them six to eight weeks of interventions. When you do that, you hope it works because you have a set of tools. If it doesn't work, you move them along in the process to get other services to them to hopefully, there's like tier one, tier two and tier three. If this works well, they're saying eighty percent of your kids should get what you teach if it works well. Um, I, I would say not eighty percent of our kids are getting what they need in tier one, which means what they come and learn every single day in school. Um, so we're introducing this implementation rubric. I love implementation rubrics because it's like when you were in school and you wanted to get an A and the teacher says, here, do these nine things on this project, you'll get an A. Um, so that's what this implementation rubric will do for us to let each of us uh, see where we're at in our buildings. We are gonna have a data meeting tomorrow, our very first one quarterly meeting to look at some of our academic data. These teacher-based teams are doing the very same thing, but they're uh, going on in your buildings. Uh, been going on for years. Uh, they just look a little bit different now than probably they always have. But I would say every week, some subject, some grade level, some building, there's three, four, five or six of these going on every single week uh, to look at data and see if they're moving. Recalibrating curriculum maps and pacing guides, that's pretty much all day, every day. We always do that. You can find them online. You can click on uh, the curriculum page and click right on it for you to see, parents to see, us to see. And ask any questions that you might have about it in the name of transparency. So uh, people know what's going on in our buildings. And then uh, we've actually done fifty-four uh, walkthroughs or learning walks where administrators are going through, looking for our students engaged. How are they engaged? What type of instructions taking place? Is the district sponsored curriculum being implemented? Uh, some other basic initiatives taking place. So there are fifty-four of those completed already. And um, right now they're kinda sporadic. We're gonna look for some more consistency in that. But that's kinda what we're hoping will raise the achievement paired with everything that Kelly said. Um, so let's just, give me, give me two seconds to talk about um, chronic absenteeism. First of all, that's our, that's our attendance rate in the district. Everybody's looking at like forty percent chronic, twenty percent chronic, thirty percent chronic absenteeism. There's your attendance rate for all the buildings in the district. I will say that's a little bit lower than normal. When this House bill came out about, what House bill is it, Mr. Caesar?
House bill four-ten.
House bill four-ten about six years ago, that made your life change, right? When we put a lot of stuff in your lap to help track attendance? Seven years ago. If you get ninety-five percent attendance rate in your district, House bill four-ten, it doesn't matter to you. You're off the hook. So I looked at our district, when I read that, I said, ooh, 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 what is our attendance? Ninety-four, 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 ninety-four. And I'm like, we can get to ninety-five, figure it out. Let's help get to ninety-five. We did the math on it. You'd have to have about fifteen thousand attendance marks in your school year across all your things, all your buildings and be like, we still didn't get it. You still didn't move it one percent. So when you have, when you're talking about one hundred and eighty days for four thousand kids, that's a lot of data and a lot of coming to school. So um, it's really hard to move this. Easier to move chronic absenteeism than overall attendance. But that is our attendance rate right there for our schools. I just got that off the state report card.
And would you agree it's dropped since COVID?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, it's hard to get them back.
There are different patterns.
You can go back, look at ODE state report cards, look at Edgewood City Schools, you'll see ninety-four percent like five, six, seven years in a row. That's what it always was. We were right at ninety-four almost every year. Ninety-four point four, ninety-four point whatever, ninety-three point nine. Um, and since COVID, this is what it is. But this data, I pulled all this off, off ODE. Not on some like special record keeping I got back at the office or something like that.
You know, part of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But there's, there are, there's some other reasons that outside of our control that um, makes it more difficult for us to go after people.
How?
Yeah, we, there was a time when parents could be held accountable to get their kids to school. And it was reinforced in the courts.
Um, yep.
I mean, that, when, when parents found out they were gonna go to jail, they started getting their kids to school. Well, that doesn't happen anymore. And four-ten came along and made it even more complicated and all that.
Yeah, they thought it was gonna make it better. In essence, I don't know if make it worse is the right term, but it didn't make it any better.
Yeah. So we used to have teeth in the law that would help us get kids to school. Though we don't have today.
So this chronic absenteeism, this right here, single-handedly gave uh, Edgewood Early Childhood Center a one. That's how they got a one.
I think Mark had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I think you're actually leaning into what I was gonna ask you about. So if, let's just say for example hypothetically in this scenario, if E E C C was a three-star school, what do you think our overall district rating would look like?
Three point five or four? At least a three-five.
So I'm a, I'm a big believer in that, I've listened to the discussion in here and, and, and I don't mean to sound critical and so please don't take it that way. The thing about this, like as a parent, as a community member, perception is reality. And you know, Kelly made the comment, we were in the bottom third county. If, if I remember correctly, every school district in Butler County scored higher than us with the exception of Middletown and New Miami.
Correct.
And I personally, as a, as a parent, as a, as a father, you know, living in this district, I'm, I'm really not happy with that. But I, I hear what we're talking about with Seven Mile. They've got the one category, the chronic absenteeism.
Mm-hmm.
And you just made the comment that to move the needle on that is gonna be very, very difficult to do. So if that is in fact the case, I think if, if I'm hearing you correctly, Seven Mile School is always gonna be a, a one. Is that, is that, or are we saying?
There's some, there, in essence, well, let's get to the chronic absenteeism. There's some hope there with chronic absenteeism. Um, if we decided we wanted, this is, I don't wanna say controversial. If we decided we wanted a whole grade screen, a kindergartner and screen every two hundred and fifty students he has over there, there's a gifted component in there. But when you ask all of your gifted coordinators around the county and state, how do you feel about uh, testing a kid for gifted when they're five? They're like, it's a waste of your time. So if we wanted to waste our time and you, there's, we could pull in gifted, um, and we could pull in chronic absenteeism. But then you're caught between what's best for a kid, go in and haul little Johnny in here after he's been screened on one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven things and say, hey, also, we're gonna find out if you're gifted or not, dude. Sit down and take this. You know, do we wanna do that? We could maybe squeeze out some more points, get, get a star or two out of that and then maybe squeeze them out of here. This is different than overall
Attendance.
Attendance. Wait till you see where they really want you to go.
So I guess the point I was, the point I was making is, you know, I, I do think the stars is important.
Mm-hmm, perception.
Well, if we had fives, if we were a five-star school, I think this conversation would probably sound a lot different, right? And we're not. Um, I also think, you know, Tom said graduation rates important. We kinda talked about standardization. You know, you talked about employee enroll, enlist. There's standardized testing for all of those things. So standardized testing is just the way it is, right? Whether it's SAT, ACT, GRE, ASVAB, whatever it is, standardized testing is. So I think all these things are important, but I think this overall rating is really important. And if we're talking specifically about Seven Mile and being that difficult to move the needle on chronic absenteeism or attendance in general. And we don't have some way to, to raise the, the needle in Seven Mile, which will have a major impact on the overall rating of the district. I think we need to start having some conversations about how we can potentially move that with more metrics in there. Because if, if I'm hearing you correctly, I mean, we're, we're gonna be a three-star school for the, for the near future.
I think we can be a three point five next year.
I'd say four, but yeah, go ahead.
Maybe a four. I mean, our goal's to be a three point five.
I get what, I, I think I'm picking up on what you're saying. So like if we were to take, okay, I'm gonna say Seven Mile and uh, Bayback and put them together.
You wouldn't have that much of
You wouldn't have that weighing down.
One hundred percent.
So what would, that would increase the scores tremendously.
Yeah, yeah.
Bayback's a
And all this is
Seven Mile could've been too, is the point I'm making.
One hundred percent. We've already said that. We're, with one grade in that building versus having a, like a K-one-two building, like a ton of other, I don't wanna say a ton of other, but if it's K-one-two, we wouldn't have this problem as much.
If I'm hearing correctly, if we had a first and second, a, a partial first and second grade at Seven Mile, a partial first and second grade at Bayback, and both of those were three-star schools, which Bayback already is, we would be a three and a half or a four-star school right now.
Whatever the impact would be, if you cut them in half and made it one-two, one-two, half and half, whatever the impact would be, it would only be half the impact. Does that make sense? So if you're counting chronic absenteeism, I'm like counting it for two hundred in one place and two hundred in the other place. Instead of four hundred and one and making any negative attribute have less weight towards the overall weight of that component. Does that make sense? If you split them, you're splitting, you're splitting the probability or ability to move them up and down.
If we're saying a four, we'd be a three and a half right now and, and we would have made significant improvement.
Yeah, we, it, it's so a shame that we're at a three, a three because I think somebody in the room just mentioned like one, one number. If Doug graduates one extra person, we're at a three and a half and we're not having that conversation anymore. I will also say, and I hate, we wanna be Edgewood, right? And I know you mentioned a lot of screeners they gotta take when they leave here. A lot of them screeners and standardized tests that you said they have to take. They gotta have a high school diploma for that, right?
Sure.
We have a neighboring district that'll have eighteen percent of their kids that can't go take one of them cause they have a higher grade than us on the report card, but they got eighteen percent of their kids can't go take that test cause they didn't get them a diploma.
Well, and I, I
Go ahead.
Well, I, I was gonna say, you know, we're, we're talking about, more or less, we're talking about playing the, the game, we're spreading out the stats. We're not talking about dealing with what causes a kid chronically absent.
Right.
That's the problem. It's not figuring out how to make the math work. It's how we get those kids to school.
And it doesn't matter what district you're in, what socioeconomic level you're talking about, when parents do not enforce that, we're up against
I, I get that. Here's, here's what I'm picking up from all this. We just failed a levy and a lot of what people were saying was, if we, maybe if our scores were better, I would support it. So me, it's the image of everybody else. That was very frustrating. But uh, you know, so I kinda understand where the perception or the, the scores do matter because of we need people to support these levies. So that way we can, you know, purchase curriculum and do those kinda things. I agree.
I believe scores are important too. Matter of fact, I wouldn't wanna say this, but I was gonna take your, where you stand up, shut, shut up or whatever. I can't help it.
We went over the timeline. Go ahead.
Okay. We had a, we had an elementary school in this district called Bloomfield Elementary that was excellent on the report card because that was the measure then, eight or nine years in a row. Uh, those are the same, more or less same kinda kids, same kinda families that we have today. And, and I guess what I would, what I would say to the principals and admin folk and teachers that, that instead of, what I, what I would do and what I did uh, was we, we put a face and a name to every one of those percentage points. And we didn't emphasize raising the percentage point. We, we emphasized dealing with Johnny or Suzie or Billy or Bobby and making sure that they had every opportunity and they did what was gonna help them be successful in life. Then the scores came with that. And so administrators, don't kill yourself over
Tracing this.
points and numbers. Have people put names and faces on those numbers and focus on those little kids. And that way, it goes up. Because people that do this job are in, most of them, ninety-nine percent of us are in it because we love kids. We wanna produce good people to go out in the world. And, and when you look at them as people and you see them and you know what Billy had to deal with to get to school today, uh, or, or who meant whatever, whoever they are, then that makes it easier to affect a change in their life. And it's a lot easier, it was always a lot easier for me to deal with a kid and a name that was a percentage point. We, I would forget the points, go for the kids.
Sure.
And over the years, I, it, it showed, and the last building that I worked in got some pretty good scores.
It did.
Report card you're talking about. And we didn't do so much point. I couldn't tell you what the points were, but I knew we did, we did things with teachers where we had them identify, okay, what's that kid's name? What, who am I looking at in my class? And that's, and we built relationships with those kids.
So, so I don't disagree with anything that's been said, but I, I do think, you know, to Andrew's point, we failed a, we failed a levy. It's in our board docs tonight. We're gonna talk about this. Attendance projections over the next several years to include this year have been continually declining. I do know people in this district who have pulled their kids out of this district and put them in private schools. When you look at schools like Ross, for example, people moved to the Ross School District because of the Ross School District. We have got, our, our district is shrinking. Our district is, is getting smaller if you put faith into those numbers. We failed the tax levy. The perception is, is that we're bottom third school in Butler County regardless of how you break that down. I don't think we can discredit this star rating. I do think it is important. I think we need to be cognizant of it. And I think we need to continue to provide a great education, a great service to the community and the standard of measurement in the state of Ohio is what we're talking about right here. So we can talk about graduation rates. We can talk about all these different things. But the reality of it is, is that, that report card that we're getting from the state is what's gonna bring people to our community, bring people to our schools. I think, I think we've talked about, we got a lot of opportunity here, but I think we do have to look at, I think we do need to consider how we're playing the game. Because at the end of the day, that's our, that's our overall rating.
Well, we'll tell you that we improved by seven points on the report card in one year. And we went from way down to way up uh, in one year. And the state department recognized what Edgewood, the teachers did, Edgewood did. Uh, so yeah, I believe in good scores. Don't get me wrong. But it's a lot easier to work, work for them when you're looking at kids as people.
I think you're both saying the same thing. You're just saying, don't forget, in the numbers game, it boils down to every number is a student with a face and a story.
Yeah, this is the third major change I've experienced. This right here, this star system, it's be gone in six years. There won't be no more stars. There weren't any stars six years ago. This is gonna change. I mean, like I said, that's why I went all the way back to the Otis Lennon in nineteen eighty-one proficiency test.
Test basic skills.
Yeah, yeah. Then we got, then we got, we got proficiency test, then we had the air, then we had the, uh, whatever the other one was, that air purchase, probably cause they got some, like, these stars will be gone. So we really gotta go back to what Mr. York said. Regardless of what they throw us, we gotta provide quality, top-notch education, which means individualize for every student, know the kid, know what they need, differentiate that instruction, maximize the instructional minutes in the classroom, provide the professional development. That's a, that's another presentation for me. This presentation's on the report card and I'm as competitive as anybody. I come up in the bottom third. I don't like that. I want, I wanna dag on five-star. Now, there's not a five-star in the, in the county, I don't believe, unless Ross might've, Ross might've got one. But I want a five-star out of this. I wanna win all the games. We got a three-star right now. Somebody thinks we're good enough. And that's why I said it depends on which standard you look at. We underachieved. We're better than a three. I know that. All you gotta do is step around, look around our district, look around our hallways. We're better than that. And I know it's gotta go up, but I'm just giving what the data said. We can play, I've spent my whole career playing this game. This'll wear you out. We really gotta go back to what Mr. York said, cause that's a universal retrofit. It doesn't matter what you change this report card to. We do education right. Cause we'll be figuring out something else. You have to get this number down to five point five, by the way. I was gonna show you this definition. That's not happening. We're being recorded right now. You could put this on whatever news network you want. That is not going to five percent by two thousand thirty-one and you can bet your bottom dollar on it.
Well, they, you recall the very first mark, they said we'd be at a hundred percent, even in our, even in our assessment by one
Right. This is going away.
And we were supposed to be at a hundred percent achievement and then come off some of that stuff.
Yeah, I, uh, Scott, I'll tell you, I'm gonna save this for board member contributions or whatever that's called in our, in our agenda. But uh, I have some uh, legislative uh, I have some legislation updates. One of them is that, and Kelly, I don't know if you've been in any state meetings recently, but, uh, John Graff went to one last week. The, the people that were there from the Department of Education no longer call themselves the Department of Education.
They do.
They've just called the department, and they have no ability to make anything really happen right now. So all of this, the people that are telling us all of these things right here, they are just going to work every day and hoping that they get to go home with a job.
Yes, this is all changing. We gotta do what you said, Mr. York, and it's come to these schools every day, love the kids, nurture them, have quality, high, high-level lesson planning, have great curriculum, differentiate for the kids, maximize instructional time. When you need help, let us know, and we'll get you training. I mean, that's educational. We are, but we gotta probably grind harder at it. You know, did we get away from it a little bit during COVID?
Yeah, I think we gotta be strategic also, because I mean, no disrespect, Mr. Fussneck, but I know anybody watching that right now is thinking, bull crap and not believing a word you're saying. They're not believing a word you're saying or a word I'm saying. Any of us in this room, they're looking at everything as excuses. I'm just telling you, that's the way a lot of them seeing it.
Understandable.
And so we could give-
I know, I know. Trust me, I know that. But what I'm saying is, we could give the best education in the state of Ohio
and get two and a half and three stars and be in the bottom third in Butler County on that star rating, and guess what? It won't matter to everybody in this district.
We, we've gotta be strategic, and we gotta get out of the bottom third.
We have to do both. Now, I agree with what Mr. York is saying and what you're saying. I, one hundred percent. When it comes down to it, that's what's most important. But also, we have to be strategic.
I mean, I could raise our graduation rate right now by about four percent. Could we not do it, Doug? Could we not do it, Lindsay? We could raise it. Could we not raise it by four percent right now?
How would you do that?
How would we do it? Now, it's not good for kids, but I'll raise it. Tell them how we get it up.
Two percent, because the-
Grade twenty-three.
The twenty-three grad. So we get penalized, and that's why, so the one student that we missed, there were a number of kids that decided to defer their diploma.
We could've had an A graduation rate five, six years in a row right now.
One of the students deferred their diploma, actually then unenrolled in Edgewood and went to a neighborhood school district to be project life.
Did what?
So they graduated from Edgewood, they deferred their diploma, and went to project life.
And moved to Edgewood.
Jeez. 'Cause it, we wanna do what's best for that kid.
Yeah.
But that's making kids thriving.
How many, right, he's thriving.
These programs for our students with intellectual disabilities, how they get jobs, and how they have the livelihood. And we do have a high percentage.
We're one of the few districts that provide that opportunity for kids. One of the few.
There are some districts in the county who-
Which I, I knew that, which I've talked to a lot of people that aren't aware of.
We can flip that and get an A right now.
So that's something that we need to make sure that, you know, people are aware of, because what happens is, when we're out, you know, trying, we're the bad guys, 'cause we're out asking for money for a levy and things like that, nobody wants to support it, because those are the kind of things we need to make sure that are out there, where the community is aware of those things.
For sure.
So Andrew, here's, here's one of those things that you can play with. Um, when kids are taking the state test for math, they can, they take it one time, they get a two. Well, two is what they have to have. But it would be better for them to get a three or a four, right? So we give, we choose to give it to them again. Let them try, get that higher score. That's a good thing, because where do those points go? It goes towards the graduation rate. So if a two is not as good as having a four, 'cause now you, now you've got more points, and you're more likely to graduate from high school. So we could not let them take it over again. We could not let, let them take it three times, because we have chosen before to do that, to allow the kid to better themselves. They may not, but, and if they don't, or they do, we still got that first score that they, when they took the test the first time, even though they got a four on the fourth, or third or fourth time they took the test. Now, that's a stupid system. I don't care who hears that. That's dumb. When, when you saddle the district with something, that, that hurts us. But we're doing what's best for kids, right? Isn't that fair to give a kid another chance to take the test, to get a higher grade, so they get more points to graduate?
Absolutely. And I'm not saying take anything from the kids.
But we would, if we wanna play the game, we just give them the two. Don't take anymore. Don't take anymore. You got it, too.
I think what we're, we're saying is that, yes, we're looking at systems and frameworks in the district, such as what we talked about, pre-do adoption, what kind of training are we offering, what kind of processes do we have taking place in the district to keep this a focus. And then I think we're also entering conversations with numbers, but as we exit the conversations, they are about the kids. So if you're looking for five, ten kids, whatever, you're still talking about Kelly and Amy and Lindsay, whoever, and, and how we can move those kids.
It's the only way we know we're getting better.
Bottom line goes down to, we want to look at every parent and say, your child grew in one year, and out of time, under this instruction.
At some point in time, we gotta get on a scale. We're trying to lose weight.
By all means.
Right. At some point in time, we gotta look at the data to see if it's going up. And I agree, I, I opened it up, I think, with, I think we underachieved. I'm pretty sure I opened up with that.
You did.
Like, I know we used to be a 3.5 or 4, um, but we're not right now. So these are the things we're focused to know and try to get that up. Some of this is low-hanging fruit. I could've, I could've picked two other parts of the report card. This is, this is deep. It, I have this conversation everywhere I do this presentation, because the report card is just so contentious.
Well, I mean, early, early in this, you said that chronic absenteeism is gonna be a lot easier to fix than attendance.
It is. So-
I mean, obviously, that's where we're gonna start then.
Mm-hmm. So, do you want me to tell you how I think we can do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's these things called full-time equivalencies, FTE. And Paige, if I miss quote what an FTE is, you let me know. So first of all, let's talk about the definition for chronic absenteeism, right here. A student is considered chronically absent if they miss at least ten percent of instructional time. Not ten days, ten percent, for any reason. It doesn't matter why you missed. Well, they had COVID, good, you're over here in the chronic absenteeism now. So, thank you. So that's another part that we don't like about this, and there's no exemptions right now for a kid that got a surgery and is out four weeks. You're chronically absent. That's gonna change, but we gotta give all this legislation time. So at Mr. Banks's building, 'cause, 'cause Mr. Banks was actually a close, I mean, EHS was a close second to ECC, but since his building has a whole lot more attribution, uh, things being attributed to the grade, it didn't jump out. This one jumped out, but in essence, they're in the same boat. They're about forty percent chronically absent. At that building last year, 'cause I did the math with Ms. Hurd, and, uh, a student was required to go to Edgewood Early Childhood Center for 1,007 hours last year. When you do the enrollment, times 1,007 hours, it was a total of 248,000 hours worth of attendance that should've been had inside those four walls. So we're not counting every day they go there. So when a kid meets that definition of ten percent, the bottom denominator, it's basic math, they got the denominator at the bottom, is 248,000, whatever that number was. When you, when you have a chronically absent kid that, out of those 1,007 hours, missed 672, and Mr. York already told you, we don't have any bite. Here's House Bill 410 back there. You're, they're not doing anything when they go to court. We're eating those 675 hours, man. So one kid could, could crush, so now, say you get nine of those, eleven of those, I haven't quantified the math with it, that numerator goes at the top. So out of that total 248,000 hours, 1,007 per kid that goes on the bottom, the top is the numerator. It's only the chronic absent kids that go on the top. No one else. Not the perfect attendance, not those other rates, the ninety percent rate we had or whatever, just the chronic. When you do the basic dividing, the number, we did the math, it comes up to like 41.99999. So that's how that number comes to be. Here's why I think it's a little bit easier initially, because if you can, if you're thirty-six or higher, you only have to move that number 1.1 percent. So we did some basic math. I said, Paige, do the math for me. How many hours do we need? How many hours do we need to get from, uh, the forty-two, whatever it is, down to the thirty-nine point, whatever, thirty-nine point eight or nine, whatever that is? Uh, and we had to move, I can't remember the amount of hours, Paige, was it a couple thousand hours? It was like a couple thousand hours. I got it written down in this paper back here, if you, if you wanted to know what it was. That is easier to me, knowing what I told you about how hard it is to get them to move a half percent as a district. It's easier to me to find those chronically absent kids and find out why, and try to provide for them some of the services we may have in the district, some of the reasons why, some, some, some of the reasons why, and get them to come to school. It's an hours game. That doesn't mean forty-two percent of our kids were chronically absent. That means, we, we haven't quantified it. So one of the things that we're doing, we'll read this definition before I get off. You see that three percent? So this year, it was twenty-two. Twenty-two point one, you could see, or no, twenty point two is wherever we're supposed to be. It's going down by three, 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 three. It's not attainable. It's not, it's not gonna happen. I'm in my twenty-ninth year. I know other people been there longer than me doing this business. That's not happening. Nobody's getting that. So I don't know what they're gonna do with all that, but if we can save about two or three, four thousand hours, Mr. Banks, you probably need to get with me and Ms. Hurd to find out what that number is. And I got with Ms. Hurd. I said, can we run a report? Every first of the month, these principals get a printout of all the kids approaching that threshold, 'cause once they pass ten percent, it's over. They're, they're, they're in the chronic absent. They're up in the numerator. Can we get them when they're at four percent? Can we get them when they're at five percent? Can we get them so that we can catch them before they get there? So that's one change we've made, is to print it out under that definition. Attendance reports in our business have always been, here's how many days a kid's been out. They missed seven days of school. We're gonna get it in that fashion to show hours, so we can hopefully leverage into this a little bit. That's why I think that's a little bit easier, to try to chase down some kids that are missing fifty-nine days of school. Can we get them here? Can we get them to only miss, you know, twenty-four days of school? Um, that would've, that right there by itself would've, I mean, heck, if you graduate the one kid and get his, who knows where we're at? But, you know, I'm not a would've, could've, should've guy, so, um, we are what we are. There's some of the things we're doing about attendance. Whoops. I just mentioned, um, I'll go back one here. This is very delayed. It's probably gonna go back two screens. Okay. Um, right there, the, uh, yeah, getting that from Ms. Hurd, third, third, uh, where's it at? Oh, the second bullet down. We have a meeting next week with the, uh, with the secretaries, right, to make sure that we're being very consistent with what is a tardy, what is an absent. We should be on target. I've confirmed that with everybody, but you gotta recalibrate this stuff every two, three, four years in schools to make sure as you get new employees on board that they're doing. I mean, if you have one marking wrong and, and you miss, you're counting a tardy as an absence because you thought it was a thirty-minute difference, and all of a sudden you get to the end of the year, and you're like, man, we just missed 497 hours, 'cause I accidentally marked something wrong. So we'll make sure that all that is consistent. This is Mr. Caesar's job here. That's, that's House Bill 410. Um, we've got a new reporting, uh, way to report the attendance for, for parents to try to make it easier. So that's some of the stuff we're doing for chronic absenteeism. Um, so again, I mean, I can answer any questions you might have about all this stuff, but honestly, I agree with every comment that's been made here. I mean, like, I agree, like, I don't wanna be bottom third. I, I don't feel like I'm bottom third in anything in my life, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna stay in the bottom third. So I wanna move it out of there, and I agree. I mean, I don't own a home here, but if I did, I'm like, my gosh, would you get this thing up to four? So, you know, because they think there's, in some ways, there is. There's correlation to all this stuff, right? It garners business. It garners commerce. It garners tax levy.
Edgewood schools used to lead every real estate ad.
Right.
Edgewood schools. It was the lead. It wasn't pool, basement, barn. It was Edgewood schools. That's where we wanna be.
Yes.
Andrew, I understand that totally. Mark, we want, I, I, I wanna be number one.
Right.
I want Edgewood to be number one, not, not even in the top third, number one. But there are ways to get there.
There are, yeah. And there, I could've gave you ten other ones, trust me. You see that? This is very, very deep and dark system.
You've probably got more information than you care to know, but hopefully you've walked away with another or two. Any last-minute questions before we move on? I think Gary Gabbard's asleep, but-
No, he's awake. He's awake. He gets a doggone-
All right. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, next we have public participation. We don't have anybody signed up for that. Uh, next we will go to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, Mr. Gabbard. First, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda, oh, we did agenda, a motion to approve the financial reports.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Mr. York, go second.
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Do I skip it? Okay, I'll back up. Moving back up to motion to approve the minutes.
Looking for a motion to approve the regular board minutes of September eighteenth.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, go second.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Out of the block items C, D, and E, this is three donations. The first is $500 from K&amp;E Advanced Dentistry for the girls' tennis team. The second one is $200 from Ann Jansen for the Edgewood Early Childhood Principals Fund. And the third one is $1,200 from the Band Boosters for a water filling station for the band room at the high school.
I'm looking for a motion to approve three separate donations.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. Messerschmidt, go second. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Okay, that is, that motion carries five zero. Um, next is informational items. Um, the only thing I have, uh, we do need to approve the RCD next month, uh, so we need to meet fifteen minutes early for the board meeting. That's just for, um, disposal, uh, records.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
You're welcome.
I, I do have one comment, uh, Ms. Bowers, I was gonna say, or ask you about now and then, do you have a number one? We changing processes and policies, 'cause that, that hasn't ever been that low, that number?
We, we are trying really hard to make sure that people are getting things in on time. Um, these are also anything that would be, uh, more than $3,000. So if maybe we missed $2.99 shipping on something, that wouldn't be there, but we are, we are trying really hard to make sure that our reps get put in in a timely order. Um, just make sure you get to be able to forward things.
That's one of the things I look for every time. I think you're doing a great job.
We're trying really hard. Thank you.
Anything else? Sure. Thank you. Uh, next we have superintendent items.
Yes, I have very short items here. Uh, first is, I'm looking for an approval for three field trips. One is to Indianapolis for the FFA convention. The other two are for our core leaders here at the high school. One's a West Virginia trip, the other's Indiana. And they're all very informative, good trips for our students, good experiences.
Looking for a motion to approve the three field trips as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Ashcraft, go second. These are the same trips that they go on every year. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero.
Hey, by superintendent items, I'd like to talk a little bit about community engagement. As you're aware, we're working with an outside facilitator. We have put out, distributed several surveys. He's gonna come back on November second, give us those results. And from the results of the community, we're gonna find some big rocks, some big ideas that we might wanna focus on or look at. Um, so what we keep you in the loop, that is November- Um, so I wanted to keep you in the loop, that is November second here at the high school at six P M. Uh, would love to have more participation up to two if anybody's interested. You heard Scott talk a lot about attendance, we've just added a new link to our website that parents can easily access. Get online, buy building, there's a Google Doc, Kelly will be out today, you know, whatever. And it'll be, um, just really, really easy access communication. So we're hoping to get that information out on a regular basis. And then the next piece of information, you're probably thinking, every time we meet, we talk about the district calendar. Well, I have to tell you quickly that in August, at the Butler County Superintendent Meeting, they were talking about our students are gonna experience two solar eclipse, eclipses. One was two weekends ago, or I guess it was last weekend, no, on the sixteenth, what was that? Where are we? Uh, was a partial solar eclipse, and they gave us some lessons and whatnot. But there is a full solar eclipse that even our safety management's saying, you guys need to think about, will you have a two-hour early dismissal, or will you close that day? And so when I first heard about it, I said, well, we've had solar eclipses before, we'll just buy the sunglasses and move on. And they said, Kelly, this is a full one, it's gonna be very different, it's gonna be dark for a longer period of time, there could be accidents. So anyway, just about every school district is closing on April eighth, it's not even an early dismissal, they're closing. Um, they haven't notified, I will tell you, Fairfield and Hamilton have notified their districts today. I've been, I went from August, there's no way we're closing, to, okay, maybe we'll do a two-hour early dismissal, to now looking at our chronic absenteeism data to say, you know what, it's the day after spring break. If we do a two-hour dismissal, we won't have anybody here anyway. So my recommendation to the board is to use that as a calamity day, uh, just like we would for any type of weather or whatnot. Upon the advice of our safety management team in Butler County, and upon the advice that as of right now, two of our Butler County districts have actually notified families, the others are all saying we're not going. So that's the pressure. Now you know the ins and outs of snow days. But that would be a recommendation, um, that, that I'd say we will follow suit upon, upon that safety management. So I wanna get that information out, and we will notify families this week of that, unless there is great concern and you can tell me now if so.
So this is the Monday after spring break?
Yes, April eighth. So we would stretch our spring break out to, that students would return on the ninth instead of the eighth. And it would be one of our calamity days that we can use. Now, once you hit so many calamity days, we would go to an online learning. So let's say that we would have a really bad winter holiday, or, excuse me, just a winter, you know, snow and ice, and we'd be out of school. Once we hit, I believe it's day, help me out, Elisa, is it day eight? No, I think five was the original, but you get, I think, Sandy, you might know, is it day eight that we actually have to go to online learning? Or calamity bag days, does that ring a bell?
We've never done calamity days.
Like a blizzard dad, a blizzard bag day, you didn't ever?
Never done it, no.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, back, yeah, when we moved from days to hours, when the Ohio Department of Education started saying attendance is recorded by hours, that's when they came up with rule out the calamity days, and there will be so many days, you get five, and then on day six, seven, eight, you get a blizzard bag day. Then we went to COVID, everybody went to online learning. Now the rule is, once you go beyond that five, you do online learning. So my point is, we would follow suit with our calamity days if that would be the case.
Do, do we need to make this decision now, if we push this down?
I'm, I'm just making the decision unless you guys have a real issue with it and tell me, and I will put the letter out.
What you still undoing is, right, with it is if we, you know, if we have to add days to the end of the year for some reason.
We would, we'd be online learning days, we would add.
You already have days added on it, designated as your makeup days, anyway, right?
No.
Don't you have to do that?
No, because now we, they eliminated that, and we do online days. So rather than saying, no school, no work, it would be, Edgewood's not reporting today, but you will report to online learning, get into your Google classroom and connect. That's how it looks. We don't have makeup days like we used to. I thought it was on the end of our calendar.
I'm okay. I don't have an opinion either way. Well, it's supposed to be in Halmington, you know, mild winter, hopefully, we don't get that.
You just write that.
I just, I just remember.
Oh, you guys canceled?
Carrie did, well. I will be fine with it, I've seen most schools have already made that decision.
Verbally, they've all made the decision.
It is gonna be the day coming back from spring break, so I'm for it, probably a tough attendance day anyway. Yeah, I don't have an opinion either way.
Then the other choice would have to go to school, we'll buy two thousand dollars worth of sunglasses for them, and then they could stay at school. That was the opinion, and I earned the ticket.
They'll still look.
We'll do it two hours.
Give them the glasses, they'll still look at it, so.
They're gonna be out of their houses like them anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure exactly the path of this thing, but they say that we're pretty much gonna be directly in the path for.
We are just south of, of the path, Butler County's just a little south of the path. Ideally, Dayton is the perfect place you want to be, and hotel rooms are already booking up, businesses are booking up. There's people that follow this, that are going to museums and whatnot. But yes, we are gonna be right south of the direct eclipse. And I mean, for the safety manager to come into our meetings and talk about this, like I said, I blew it off in August saying, we'll just go get them some glasses, to the next month saying, all right, we'll do an early dismissal. And then when our report card results came in, it was like, if we do an early dismissal on the day after spring break, it's gonna kill us on attendance. So why not use it as a calamity day? If we already have five from the winter days, it would be an online learning day. If we don't, it will just be one of our five calamity days. Do you see a Union piece in this standing, just off the cuff? All right.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Spider.
Which one's my items?
They probably won't want to work. You don't want to, do you?
It happens eighteen oh six, and it happens in our lifetime as adults, in Ohio.
Pretty neat.
All right, we're gonna move to, uh, informational items. Mr. York, would you like to start, please?
Sure. Uh, passing out the student success newsletter from Public Tech. Let you guys look through that on your leisure. Uh, I, I normally don't say anything about, uh, we always get updates on, uh, legislations going through the House and so forth, and the Senate, but, um, I wanna point out a couple that are very interesting, there are being, uh, there are hearings going on, Kelly, you've probably heard about it. Maybe the administrators have been to some meetings. Uh, there's a, there's a thought out there that there's, they're going to build into the calendar mental health days for students. Uh, and that kids have, um, up to three mental health days, uh, every year. But they didn't say teachers, so I don't know what's the deal with that, but, uh.
Call personal days.
Yeah, personal days. Um, one thing I think is interesting for board members and people who wanna be, uh, on the board, um, there's also a discussion about creating a primary for board races. And, uh, and what that implies then is every board, every person who wants to run for the board has to declare a political party. So you don't just run for the board, you become Republican candidate for the board, or the Democrat candidate for the board, which I think is an interesting piece, uh, to, uh, government intrusion on your life. But anyway, that's, uh, that's being talked about. Um, so I actually was up north a few weeks ago, and I saw a bunch of school board campaign signs that were out where the candidates actually declared Republican candidate on the signs, is that? I think that that's, they're gonna have to play on the public sentiment for the area that they live in.
I didn't think you were on, I didn't worry.
Well, it's gonna, it's being talked about being, or, not only do you say what you are, but they're gonna have a primary, just, just for board races.
Yeah.
What do you do when you have three?
Pardon?
Like, what about the year, like, that we have three people, right?
There'll be a primary for that year, there'll, there'll be, here's the verbiage. Uh, to provide for primary elections for state and school district board of education members, and move the election for state and school district board members from the non-partisan, uh, ballot. So if you have, uh, board openings every year because of the rotation or whatever, it looks like you're probably gonna have a primary for the board every year. That that happens. Uh, there's also, and I, I, I think this is interesting, uh, some discussion going on in the Senate uh, to, uh, allow, uh, U S Armed Services veterans to get a teaching license, uh, to have a teaching, teaching license without the, uh, instruction to do so, which I think is kinda cool. I'd like to see how they figure out how to do that, but. And then the I've, I already blew my other big one, Scott, when I said the department is now the department. At least they're not being called the firm, cuz then we would be in big trouble maybe, but, or at least I would, for York, but, uh, but they are calling themselves the department, and they're not sure what the future is, I think.
Under the direct direction of our governor.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. York.
He's an expert in education as well as everything else, so. I only have two more months, like I said, I want to.
Actually, we're gonna have a lot of Thomasons these next couple months. We're gonna find out how it really feels.
Yeah, I've been holding back.
It's always a good place to be in.
Thank you, Mr. York. Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yeah, just the only thing I'll, I'll call out is, unfortunately, as our board members, we had to cancel the homecoming parade because of the, the letter that came through. But, uh, despite that, I, I just, I think the district, the high school, everybody involved did a really good job, um, with the kids. The, uh, it just, you know, that's a pretty special event for a lot of, a lot of folks, and I thought it was done very well. The floats out in the parking lot and all, it was a really nice touch. Just wanted to recognize everybody was involved, and what a great, great ending to what potentially was a pretty, pretty bad start to the, the homecoming festivities.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt. Mr. Pressler? Thank you, Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Edgewood.
Um, I just wanna congratulate Lady Wilder, she's a freshman, and did the, uh, FFA job in her C D E. She took first in sub-districts and sixth in districts, so that was pretty cool. Um, she was also the student of the, or the member of the month last month, so she's taken FFA by the store. I just wanna congratulate her, I worked with her on the, uh, C D E, so that's, it's a hard one.
That's great. Thank you, Mrs. Ashcraft. I know a lot of things was thrown at us tonight, uh, and the state report card, I know don't reflect how much our teachers cared and what they put into their jobs. Unfortunately, it's, it's a monster that we're just up against. And lastly, I would just like to, uh, wish you and Harrison happy birthday, and. I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
I think you should lead happy birthday, Mr. Gabbard.
Happy birthday, you guys wanna sing happy birthday? Ready? Have a birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Lori. Happy birthday to you. Uh, now I'm gonna look for a motion to move to executive session for some or all of the following reasons. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, purchase or sale of property, collective bargaining matters, matters required to be kept confidential, security, confidential information pertaining to economic development, Veterans Service Commission. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, go have a second.
Second.
Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we're back, eight thirty-three. Um, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the personnel items as presented. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, go have a second.
Second.
Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the administrative and exempt compensation schedule as presented. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, go have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zeros.
I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, go have a second.
Second.
Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.